Welcome to our Greeley-Evan School Board meeting. It is Monday, April 23rd, 2018. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Present.
Mr. Haley.
Present.
Mr. Lydiak.
Present.
Mr. Matthews.
Present.
Ms. Pappas.
Present.
Dr. Richard.
Present.
Ms. Solis.
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, good evening again, and as with many of our meetings, I like to remind folks of three key words, three key words that we use to describe our work here at District Six: engage, empower, and inspire. And for each of these, I oftentimes find, gee, gosh, something happened in the school district that might line up just pretty well with one of those or all. Tonight, I'd like to link the engage portion with a reminder to all of us that the voters approved added monies to the district to permit us to, in many cases, change safety situations, in many cases, repair other situations, bring in books and so forth. But in this case, we're going to get three roofs on Jackson, Madison, and Franklin. And it's not like they're the most exciting expenditures that we're ever going to involve ourselves, or that we'll get an awful lot of newspaper coverage on getting new roofing. But kids inside, when it's rainy, they probably make a difference for them, and this is a side product of being able to have that kind of money available to address delayed needs. Under empower, Dr. Pilch, if you can stop listening now, but Dr. Pilch had to step away from the helm for a couple of days, and I want to point out that while she was gone, you know, your assistant superintendents managed to kind of run this shop, and we began saying, well, why do we even need a superintendent? But we decided to keep you on a little longer. But those folks took on the challenge and pursued those things that you assigned them to do, but they did so courageously. And that's an empowering that we need around here, because not everybody can be under somebody's watch all the time. So it's clear that you've empowered them, and they've stepped up to the challenge. So we thank you for that, and thank them, if you'll share that with your colleagues. Under inspire, again, Dr. Pilch, you have identified some people who just need to be recognized for the support and the kind of loving attention that they give to our district and to our students' success. And so I think we'll all be inspired by those individuals that will be recognized by the district tonight. So with that, we do have the opportunity for a hearing of persons desiring to speak before the board, and I have two individuals who have expressed an interest. One is Mr. JW Nelson, and Mr. Nelson, you're here to speak about Meeker Elementary, and we welcome you to the speaker's podium, and the clock doesn't start until you do. So you have two full minutes to go ahead and share. Normally, we listen to presentations. We don't immediately respond, but there's usually a follow-up from the district member.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pilch, board. For those of you who do not know me, my name is JW Nelson, and I'm a former construction manager here for District Six after serving 31 years and retiring back five years ago. I'm here tonight to talk about some very troubling events as it relates to the reconstruction of Meeker Elementary. These are troubling, and I'm not here as a disgruntled employee. I support this district, and I want that to go on the record. You've done some wonderful things here, and I want to encourage you to sally forth. But Tom Roach and myself met with Dr. Pilch last month to address one of the concerns, and that being the award of $5.5 million, or thereabouts, to a contract to a Loveland-based contractor for the reconstruction of Meeker Elementary without the benefit of a competitive bid, bid solicitation, much less a courtesy telephone call to local qualified contractors. Dr. Pilch apologized and admitted that she panicked, deferring to the Director of Finance, who recommended the Loveland-based contractor. Secondly, this administration entered into a contract with a Denver Metro design firm service relating to the reconstruction, again, of Meeker for the sum of $314,000 and change. The market value for that service should be less than $100,000, and I've confirmed this with local design teams. Again, no bid solicitation. These events are outrageous.
We have about 30 seconds to finish up in your two minutes.
And unacceptable to the stakeholders of this district. This community deserves, I believe, a public apology, and there seems to be no one qualified at this point in time to make those construction decisions.
Thank you very much for coming up today to talk about that.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Marvin Worth, who's also going to be speaking about the Meeker building, teachers' raises, and the tax override. And once again, the timing will be tight, Mr. Worth, so I hope you can box each of those three things together for us.
Yes, my name is Marvin Worth. I've lived in Greeley since 1984. What my comment is regarding a letter I sent to Ms. Pilch on April 6th. I had heard rumors about the mismanagement of repair funds on the Meeker school. I requested I wanted to talk to her. She sent me an email on April 12th. She said I was not privy to the information on the complex Meeker situation. District Six is a government organization, and its books should be open to the public. I voted for the recent tax override. Since the school district takes my money, I'm entitled to see how it is spent. So I am to pay more taxes without the superintendent's accountability, but instead, I am told that it's not my business. I conclude something is being hidden, or at least appears to be so. I have no confidence in the district. And lastly, and how does this mismanagement provide a raise for the teachers, which was talked about and was a big part of the tax override? I see mismanagement of funds, and I don't see it going to the teachers. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Worth. I understand that you're setting up a meeting with Dr. Pilch.
Yes.
All right, so that, just for the record.
Already set up.
That's actually a chance to do that conversation. Thank you very much. And that's the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the board. Superintendent's report, Dr. Pilch, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. You took a few of my comments.
I just hinted. I was only hinting.
I wanted to talk also about the roofs, the three roofs through the mill levy override dollars, and just a reminder to you all and to the public that each year of the seven years of the mill levy override, there will be significant needs addressed that are these deferred maintenance needs, like these roofs. So we're excited about beginning that work and pleased to be using a local contractor in that work as well. I also want to thank you, our Board of Education, as well as my staff, who, all of you stepped up in my absence with the death of my stepfather here in the last couple of weeks. And you know, every single one of you, my executive assistant, Christina Crane, our Director of Communications, our Director of Safety and Security, and of course, the assistant superintendents who you mentioned, everybody took on an extra load in my absence, and I sincerely appreciate it. And I'll tell you, it's a good sign of a great organization when you can step away and take care of a critical family issue and know that things are running smoothly in your absence. So kudos to all of you, and thank you. And thank you to our Board of Education for your continued and ongoing support through that situation. I want us to recognize and celebrate some of our most outstanding awards that students have received right here as we go into the graduation season. So we're really just about a month away from graduations, and those graduation dates are posted on our district website. But I want to recognize two students who were named as Dell Scholars here in District Six, and they are both Northridge High School students, Peola Espinoza and Gustavo Hernandez. And these are two seniors who, as they leave District Six to go on to college, they will receive $20,000 a year in college tuition throughout their college career, as well as a laptop and textbook credits to use throughout their college career. You know, this is one of the most prestigious scholarships in the region, and only 11 were awarded in the state of Colorado this year. And so for us to have two of those scholarships, I'm telling you, we have students working really hard and staff working equally as hard to get students ready for their life after high school. Along the same lines, we have also been notified that we have two Betrach Scholars here in District Six. So yeah, you want to clap? Go ahead, Doug. Mr. Lydiak was applauding. So I think, you know, the thing that is so incredible about Betrach Scholars is, again, these are full-ride scholarships to the schools of the student's choice here in Colorado. And we are just so proud of Hannah Kibbers, a senior at Greeley Central High School, and Mark Morelles, a senior at Northridge High School, who have been selected as Betrach Scholars by the Betrach Foundation. So congratulations to both of them. Just as a reminder, Betrach awards about 50 scholars a year, excuse me, 40 scholars a year totaling about $3 million annually, and two of our students this year are those Betrach Scholars. And I was looking back at the announcement on the Betrach Scholars, and I think I saw a 10-year history. This is our first time to have two scholars in that history in a row. Now, Julia's looking across to Doug to say, is that quite right? But I was looking at that history, and it looked like it had been at least quite some time since we'd had two scholars in the same year. So we will, I will, and possibly other staff, will have an opportunity to celebrate with those scholars this summer at the awards banquet. As they choose their teacher, they will get to honor one of their teachers at the Betrach Scholarship Awards Dinner and recognize a teacher or other staff member who have been particularly influential in their lives. So very excited about the hard work that's going on in our District Six schools and about those awards. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt.
Well, thanks. Always good news. Appreciate it. The next item is the approval of the agenda, and I'd be grateful if you'd offer a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you. Any comment or question? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll accept a motion to act on the consent agenda at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments? Discussion? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next item, Dr. Pilch, we'll come back to you, associated with another celebration. This is the Celebrate Six Awards for the second semester, and there's all kinds of people to recognize, and you picked some, the district has picked some individuals that we really want to thank.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. I will just remind everyone that this is actually a recognition that we put into place that is actually the Superintendent's Celebrate Six Award, and it's intended to recognize some of our staff or community members, or it could be students. We haven't had a student nominate yet, but for folks who have contributed significantly to students here in District Six. That's the purpose of this award. And so, Mr. DeWitt, I'm feeling a need to pause for a moment.
Sure.
Until our guests are done talking to the other guests in the room.
Oh, sure. You bet. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to come back to Celebrate Six Award now. I wasn't scolding you all, by the way. So we implemented this last year, second, last year, when we saw some folks really stepping up with some extraordinary acts here in District Six. So the way the folks are selected to be a recipient of the Celebrate Six Award is, there's a nomination process. So one of all of you who are being recognized tonight, one of your colleagues, or more than one of your colleagues, have recognized you and recommended you for this award. And then, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Crane, and Mrs. Myers and I come together, and we look at those applications, and we look at what this award means, and we select the recipients for the Celebrate Six Award. So I am happy to recognize those recipients. I know you'll come help me pass out certificates.
Absolutely.
As I talk about each one of them. We also have a gift for you, each of you, that is, says you're Celebrate Six, and we've got some treats in here for you that we hope, we just, it's just a little token, so we hope you'll know that you're honored by us, and you'll remember this recognition in the future as you use the cup or you wear your little badge, okay? So I first want to recognize Lori Baring Howard. So Lori, come on up. Come on up, Lori. Stand by me, Lori. So Lori is a member of the bus safety team in our transportations department. Stay right here. Stay right here. Lori created a lead, Lori created and leads the team of people who go into schools and perform our puppet shows about safety, and particularly about bus safety for our students. She's responsible for improving the morale of transportation by planning fun events and recognition programs for her colleagues, and Lori is always upbeat and inspires her coworkers to be the best they can be, and I have seen that in you as well. Congratulations, Lori. And the gift. We could let, if you want to sit right in front, you can. And you have your. Come on up. This is a future District Six student, I am certain. There we go. Perfect. That's perfect. All right, well, let's see if our next recipient can top this. I don't think you have your grandchildren with you, but you do have your parents. All right, our next recipient I affectionately know is Ally Mueller. I think her award reads Alyssa, Alicia Mueller, but Ally, come on up, Ally. All right. Congratulations. Ally is one of our newer teachers at Jefferson High School, which is our alternative high school, for those of you who may not know, and she is Greeley grown and proud. Ally is a positive role model for students. She has high expectations for all of them, and it shows through her work and their work every day. She is always thinking outside the box, which sometimes can be an irritant to principals. She values student opinions and encourages her students to question in all of their classes. Ally builds relationships with students, enabling her to engage and empower those students. Congratulations, Ally. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you. We've lost control. That's official. Well, the next recipient might not have his parents or grandchildren with him, but he does have, I think, almost every one of his colleagues from his school here with him. So our next Celebrate Six Award winner is Josh Peel. Josh, come on up. Come on up, Josh. Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about Josh. So Josh has gone above and beyond as a collaborator, which is what we call the teachers at Fred Charter School of Innovation. He works with fifth and sixth graders at Fred Charter School of Innovation, and he recognizes that educating his students needs to go well beyond growing them academically and intentionally provides opportunities for all students to access and develop in the arts. I actually had an opportunity to see some of that myself in Josh's classroom. Josh provides personalized educational opportunities that go beyond the walls of the school building for all of his students, and he serves as an inspiration for our staff, and his energy and positivity are infectious. Congratulations, Josh. I want to talk about Johnny, even though he's not here tonight, and we'll get over to his school and give him his certificate. But Johnny is a PE teacher at Jackson Elementary School, and he goes above and beyond every day. I've had the opportunity to also see this, being in his gymnasium, his classroom. He makes the job look easy, and he's always finding ways to help other teachers through the impactful and meaningful connections he makes with all of his students. Johnny is a model teacher, an active musician, community member, volunteer, coach, and a good friend who will always go out of his way to help others. So we'll get over and congratulate Johnny. Then finally, Vicky Rodriguez. Vicky? And I see, Vicky, come up here. I knew you were back there. And I think she too has some family with her here tonight, which is so great. Congratulations, Vicky. Vicky works tirelessly for her students at Brentwood Middle School. Vicky is one of our paraprofessionals in the special needs program at Brentwood, and she works with students with significant physical and cognitive delays, and that is very demanding work. But Vicky loves what she does, and it shows every single day. She fosters independence in each and every child and is on a mission to teach students without disabilities what students with disabilities can do. Vicky uses her active engagement to inspire and lead her students every day. Thank you, Vicky, for all you do. All right, so you guys squeeze together. So I just want to say once more that you all were selected because you really exemplify what it means to be District Six, and we celebrate you tonight for all you do for our, really, 23,000-plus students in District Six. You know, you come before us tonight as a very small group of the nearly 2,000 employees we have out there who are serving kids every single day, and your peers recommended you be here for this recognition tonight. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for all you do. And thank you to all of you who came to support them. Thank you.
Well, that's all kinds of fun. Next item, if I can get into my throne here, first read of a policy, JLC, Student Health Services and Records, and this is public information. This, a lot of people have to go home and do homework now, so we're going to wave goodbye to everybody that was here. Thanks, you guys, for coming. And so, public information for the board, Dr. Pilch.
So I want to just frame all these policies, if I may, Mr. DeWitt, and then I'm happy to take, you know, to introduce and take questions if I need to throughout.
Perfect.
But each of these policies that you will see tonight are, again, a result of the new Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, that replaced No Child Left Behind. So as a result of that, there are some regulations coming down to us from the federal level as well as the state level, and a lot of it is cleanup of language around requirements of ESSA and eliminating that No Child Left Behind language.
Well, we'll pick this up on another venture. We thank you for that info. The next item, if I've turned my page right, is 702, the revisions to Policy JF, Admission and Denial of Admission. Please offer a motion so we can consider this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Policy JF, Admission and Denial of Admission as presented. Second.
It's been moved in second. Thank you both.
Do we have a first read of Policy JLC?
Did we have an action on our first read?
It's not an action, but I don't know if we need to do anything else. Is it first read?
No?
No.
I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Everybody needs to help hold the net for Roger, so thank you, making sure things are right. We do have a motion and a second. Dr. Pilch, this is a situation where we have ESSA-related, once again, and it clarifies, just modernizes the material. Board members with questions? I'm looking for anyone. We've had the opportunity already to take a look at this, so, Ms. Crane, if you don't mind, giving this a roll call, please.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. A motion will permit action on revisions to Policy JFABD, homeless students.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Policy JFABD, homeless students as presented.
Second.
Thank you both, or all three of you. Discussion or comment above and beyond the ESSA requirement? It's not as if we can change the law, and everything that we've written down to conform to one law needs to be shifted when that law switches over. I'm seeing no new questions. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Please give a motion on revision to Policy JFBA, intra-district choice, open enrollment.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Policy JFBA, intra-district choice, open enrollment as presented. Second.
Thank you both. But new questions from the last time we discussed and covered this? Seeing none. Ms. Crane, roll call.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. I'd like to accept an offer, or an offer, and a motion at this time, and accept an offer, but I'll accept a motion to consider revisions to Regulation JFBAR, intra-district choice, open enrollment.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Regulation JFBAR, intra-district choice, open enrollment as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. The next item is revision to Policy J, I'm sorry, do we not vote? Maybe we should. See why we need a net? This is why, not just a net, but a net. Can we try without comment, anyone? I just lost myself in script here. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Ms. Solis. Motion carries seven zero.
Let's see if we can do this next one. I'd like to have a motion to act on revisions to Policy JFBB, Intra-District Choice, Open Enrollment.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Policy JFBB, Intra-District Choice, Open Enrollment, as presented.
Second.
Thanks, all three. Comments about this, which we've discussed before? Ms. Crane, roll call?
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydia?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll take a look at revision to Regulation JFBR, Intra-District Choice, Open Enrollment. We'll need a motion to consider this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Regulation JFBR, Intra-District Choice, Open Enrollment, as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments about this item? Once again, we've covered this and had the chance to review. Seeing none. Ms. Crane, roll call?
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydia?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion's required to consider revisions to Policy JRA, JRC, Student Records and Release of Information on Students.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to Policy JRA, JRC, Student Records, Release of Information on Students, as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments or questions on this item? Once again, we've had the chance to read and act on it earlier. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydia?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item is a second read and adoption of Policy JFABE, Students in Foster Care. I'd like someone to offer a motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts Policy JFABE, Students in Foster Care, as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments or questions about this second read? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydia?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Brilliant. Ms. Crane, thank you. We're going through the cleaning up of our policies, have you noticed? So we've gotten to all of those things, and now we've come to kind of a happy occasion. Dr. Pilch, the board didn't have the opportunity to follow up on a visit some time ago to Jefferson Junior High. So I think I and the others are anxious to be able to get an update. So I'm glad we could arrange this with your permission.
Thank you, President DeWitt. So we, as you all know, we opened Jefferson Junior High School in the fall of 2016. And, sorry, yep, it is. Time flies, I know. Don't get worried, I'm still with you here. But we are finishing up our second year at Jefferson Junior High. And I will just remind you that we designed, well, we didn't, the two women sitting in the front row, really Tricia Barron did most of the design of Jefferson Junior High. And then Christie Brown came on mid-year last year to help us really, between the two of them, to really make the school what it is today. And, but what we knew is that we were not, we were not quite at the level we needed to be in meeting the needs of our middle, of some of our middle school students who struggle the most. And although we would typically think of a ninth grader as a high schooler, what we saw was we had this kind of age of kids in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade that really needed more intensive intervention to get them on track, to be on track for on-time graduation from high school. And to be in a smaller setting where the staff know them better, where the staff are able to work with them more individually, and where the staff are specially trained to work with students who have a lot of needs, academic needs as well as social, emotional needs. And so I am very pleased tonight to have Dr. Hannaford here to present an update for us on Jefferson Junior High School. And both the principal and the now assistant principal, Tricia Barron and Christie Brown are here also, should we have questions we want to ask of them. But we are very excited about this work at Jefferson Junior High School. And without a doubt, you will see in the presentation that this, this design and implementation is a part of delivering on our promise to our community around ensuring that every student graduates with a plan after high school graduation for their life and clearly is tightly aligned with our district strategic plan. So with that, Dr. Hannaford, I'll let you take it.
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, Board President, Dr. DeWitt, and school board members for this opportunity. Jefferson Junior, as Dr. Pilch shared, opened in August of 2016 to reengage students in grades seven, eight, and ninth grade so that they may successfully pursue both their academic and their personal goals. And their work is directly tied to our strategic plan that by the class of 2021, students will graduate at 90% or higher and be both career and college ready. Jefferson Junior's program serves students in a setting that increases support systems while developing students' academic and career goals. Each student is connected with at least one staff member who serves as a listener, a helper, a positive role model. Jefferson Junior students are bright and motivated, and they needed a different kind of environment in order for them to thrive. And that's what the staff at Jefferson Junior High School are working hard to do. Under the leadership of Principal Tricia Barron and Assistant Principal Christie Brown, they have increased their enrollment from 80 students from last year to 112 students this school year. Student demographics include 51 ninth graders, 38 eighth graders, 23 seventh graders, of which 54 are female and 58 are male. The ethnicities include 79% Hispanic, 18% white, and 3% other ethnicities. Jefferson Junior's smaller class size of 13 provides students an opportunity for deeper relationships with staff and peers to form more easily and allows teachers to further differentiate instruction for their students. In addition to the four core offerings of math, science, social studies, and English Language Arts, students are a part of the blended learning instructional model that allows teachers to further differentiate even more for their diverse student academic needs in both English Language Arts and Math. Jefferson Junior also has a robust social and emotional learning curriculum called Discovery. The ultimate goal of Discovery is for students to achieve a positive atmosphere of dignity and respect so that they are equipped to pursue their post-secondary goals. In addition to Discovery, additional social, emotional, and learning components support students, including restorative justice, where students restore relationships with peers or staff instead of receiving discipline action. A wellness area was created this year so that students may access mindfulness tools, which has resulted in a more, in more success in problem-solving, mediations, and conflict resolutions. A wellness center is now scheduled to open next school year so that all students have access to these tools. In addition, this year, a student-led group called Emerging Leaders, consisting of 12 students, formed so that student peers may discuss issues related to the school's culture and climate and implement their ideas to further build a positive school climate at the school. Some of their most recent ideas have been implemented, including extended gym time for movement, getting that good energy out. They've opened what they call a student lounge, which is a welcoming place for studying and socializing. And they developed a partnership with a local program called Turnaround Bikes to build bikes for students who are in need. Jefferson Junior also provides a variety of different mentor programs so that students have positive role models, building relationships with them. Jefferson Junior has increased the number of students receiving individual mentors through their community partnerships. Partners Mentoring Youth provides 12 students each week mentorship to build life skills so that they may lead their lives in productive ways. And because of the Partners Mentoring Youth success this year, they plan to increase their support at Jefferson Junior from 12 students to mentoring 27 students. Jefferson Junior also has created a partnership with Christ Community Church Mentor Program that currently serves three students, which is an increase from last year where they supported three students. Further, our district's Gear Up Grant provides academic and career counseling for all 51 ninth-grade students. Each of these mentor programs are designed to build positive, life-changing relationships with students. And of the 112 students enrolled at Jefferson Junior, 86 of them are receiving ongoing supportive mentorship. This intentional work is resulting in positive gains connected to attendance, behaviors, and achievement. Overall, the school's average daily attendance is improved from last year of 71% to 73% this year. Attendance gains within seventh and eighth grade have occurred, with a slight dip in the ninth grade. It is important to note, however, that before attending Jefferson Junior, many students' average daily attendance ranged between 50 and 60%. Jefferson Junior has also seen a decrease in out-of-school suspensions, even though their enrollment rate has increased by 42 students this school year. The Restorative Justice Program and Wellness Area have positively impacted this data. The school's behavior interventionist, Brandon Lagounis, works one-on-one with students to de-escalate and restore relationships, and he has held 708 restorative justice interventions since August of this year. As attendance rates have increased and discipline rates have decreased, we have seen an increase in student achievement. This graph compares the pass rates of all students in English Language Arts and Math from first semester of last school year to first semester of this school year. An overall increase of 10.9% in English Language Arts and an increase of 9% in math has occurred. Our Quarter Three data also shows an increase this year from last school year with a 7.5% increase in ELA and 12% in math. Our freshman students have also seen an increase in their percent of earned credits compared to last school year, which was 65.1%. As of third quarter, they are at 69% and are projected to be between 69% and no lower than 66%. Historically, these same students previously were unsuccessful in their courses, and now they are finding success. Jefferson Junior is also addressing students' reading levels. And using a blended learning approach with Reading Plus, we have seen significant improvements for students who are several grade levels below in reading. In November, 63% of students were below five grade levels or more in reading. And 9% were at or above reading grade level. Through targeted comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency instruction, students demonstrated a marked improvement during their February benchmark, resulting in 56% of students five or more grade levels below in reading and 19% at or above reading grade level. Although there is much work ahead, this is very promising data. So in our second year, we know that our next steps are critical to expanding success. And we have several next steps outlined here. Specifically, we will increase our capacity to provide blended learning within reading and math so that every student is growing by at least one grade level each year. We will launch a summer extension program to provide extended learning time in math and reading. We will also continue to focus on increasing student attendance so that at least 85%, we are at 85%, and we are partnering with the Colorado Youth for Change to provide additional wraparound services for students impacted by both academic and non-academic factors influencing their attendance. Because we have already seen success with the Restorative Justice Program, we will expand the program into classrooms next school years using the CHAMP's Positive Classroom Management approach. Further, Jefferson Junior will open a wellness center to provide consistent student supports for all students. And finally, we will expand our student leadership opportunities to improve school culture and climate through the implementation of sources of strength. This student-led program is evidence-based for student resiliency, and it directly aligns to the school's culture and climate goals. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. And before you do so, I just do want to recognize Tricia and Christie, as Dr. Pilch did, who are here. And they have just done tremendous work. Opening a new school is no easy thing. And they've done it with such tenacity. And they are the driving force that has really led to these improvements for our students. And we're excited to soon go into our third year. So thank you very much for all of their hard work. And I just would love to give them a round of applause if we could.
Well, we're congratulating, but I have a feeling we're gonna have some questions for you, doctor. Well, Ms. Pappas?
So I have one comment and then one question. So just the focus that you have on culture and climate and the relationship building. I did have the opportunity to interact with one of your students in the fall. I think we talked a little bit, Trish, about this young lady. And one of the things that she talked about a lot was just the relationships that she had with you particularly, but also the, her engagement in mentoring younger students and how she felt about that and the pride that she had in being asked to be a mentor for younger students. So I just wanted to point that out. I mean, just to have the conversation with her, and her pride was just meaningful for me. So thank you for that. And then I just have a question. What is Colorado Youth for Change?
I can answer it in this. So Colorado Youth for Change is an organization within Colorado, and we're partnered with them. They have some grant funding, and so we went alongside them since they already hold the grant. And what they allow us to do in this partnership is they'll provide us an AmeriCorps representative who will be trained in attendance work, student advocacy, at quite the discounted rate, too, of only, for a full 1.0 FTE, for only $10,000. And that's amazing, to get a full-time, qualified, skilled, go-get-'em. We're gonna pull our students back in and wrap them around with the right services that they might need, that might be impacting them personally and/or that their family might need. And that's what's impacting them of helping, of getting them to school.
Thank you.
Terry, I'll just add to Ms. Pappas. I will add that Steve Dobbo, who now has Zero Dropouts, actually founded Colorado Youth for Change. He was the founder and first executive director of Colorado Youth for Change. So lots of experience with them over the years. So, Dr. Hannaford, aren't we using those same folks, those same AmeriCorps workers, or additional AmeriCorps workers at some of our other high schools also?
Yes, thank you. So we will have five. So four at our high school, so three at the comprehensive schools, as well as Jefferson High, and then an additional one for Jefferson Junior. So we'll have five partnerships next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Haley?
Thank you both very much, to you and your staff. You're doing a great job. You should be proud. It's incredibly challenging work, and you do a great job. Thank you. I may have, I have three questions. I may have missed it, the student-teacher ratio. And then, do you predict that your ninth graders are gonna go back to their traditional schools? Are they gonna go to Jefferson alternative? And how are they, you know, how is that decision being made? And then my last question is, with summer school, how are those students being selected? And how are we gonna hold them accountable for summer school? And is there gonna be, are they gonna be able to have credits attached to this time in the summer?
Yes, great question. So the first question is, the class size is about 13. It's about 1 to 13 is the ratio, so we're able to keep that smaller environment. The second question around extending the school year.
No.
Oh, no, into going to Jefferson High School. Yeah, so our current ninth graders, the vast majority of them are all going to Jefferson High. So we looked at, many of our students, they have found success at Jefferson Junior. And so we're looking at, you have to have conversations at student by student and walking them through, what were the reasons why you were successful here in the ninth grade? What did that look like for you? And then showing them what Jefferson High looks like and how those successes are in alignment. And so we have a few students who, we're still figuring out some funding sources within special education because we want to make sure that any of our students who might have special needs, that they are also taken care of in the right way at Jefferson High. So we're working out those last few remaining students. But by far, the vast majority of our students are moving up to Jefferson High, which is another reason why Jefferson Junior has the Discovery Program for their social, emotional learning curriculum. It's in alignment to Jefferson High, who is using the same program. And then we're having conversations where we have transition meetings where we talk about every individual student to make sure that they are in all the correct supports that they might need at Jefferson High and giving them tours and helping them feel comfortable and relaxed as to what their new high school will look like. And then the third question of summer school. So yeah, so any of our students who are not at grade level, we are highly encouraging them to come to the June summer school program. So highly encouraging means sitting down with the student and the family and walking them through where they are in their academic learning in both reading and math. And being really thoughtful and, and direct too, that if you are not at grade level, this extended time is designed just for you to get closer, caught up to grade level. Because it's not okay not to be at grade level, and we are here, our time can be flexible. So we can extend the day or extend the year to provide those additional supports. And so there's conversations, again, that are one-on-one with the student and with the family, providing them an understanding of what is this summer school? What am I supposed to be doing here at the ninth grade level? It would also be for credit recovery if needed, similar to what a ninth grader might do at a comprehensive high school.
Would you like to add anything to that? Got that?
Dr. Richard, please.
Thank you so much for your work on this. And it's exciting to see the increases in achievement and increases in attendance because that says something about kids wanting to be there. I was curious about two things. One is, if you would talk a little bit more about what that wellness center will look like that you're looking at opening. And then the other thing is, how students are brought into the program? How is that decision made as to who does or doesn't go to Jefferson Junior High?
So I'll start a little bit with your second question first. And so what we're looking at is a student who is not successful in their current larger comprehensive school environment. And so it might be a student who has failed all their courses. And they might have kind of sketchy attendance. And that's probably a reason why they're also not doing so great in their classes. And they might have also some behavior concerns that, you know, have been presented. They might have been suspended a few times. Like, that's our ideal student. It's our student who we know with those indicators are most likely going to be, continue to be unsuccessful unless there are some pretty significant interventions and changes that occur. So that's, that's the type of student that Jefferson Junior is welcoming and wrapping their arms around.
So it's not perhaps like open enrollment? These are recommendations from the principals at the middle schools?
Absolutely. It's not open enrollment at all. Now, there might be some family requests now that students are being successful there. I would expect that there will come a time, and they're nodding their heads yes, where there will be some family requests to have younger siblings go there because they're seeing their older children be successful.
That's a very good point. And so the wellness center, Tricia, if you would mind coming up a little bit, she can walk us through it. So I've had an opportunity at Jefferson High to be a part of their, they have a new wellness center that's funded through a grant as a part of sources of strength. And it's, it's like a classroom space, and there's different opportunities within a wellness center to re-center yourself, to have mindful activities, whether it's for students or adults. Both are accessing it. And it's a way that sometimes you, there's a lot of things that are impacting students, and you need a safe place with an adult who can help you process those feelings and those emotions that are really real. And if it's going to be really difficult to go into your algebra class or your language arts class, or you name it, or just interact with peers if those other factors are just right there in front of you and that's, that's what you're seeing. And so a wellness center, there's different objects within it and different techniques that I'm hoping you can share a little bit about.
So what usually happens is, and this has been brought to me not only by North Range behavioral therapists as well as my social workers, sometimes they're caught up in a crisis or they're caught up giving another student a pressure pass. The wellness center is to alleviate that load, okay? The intention is that my social worker has two interns. The one will be in the wellness room, and the kid can go and have a pressure pass. They can either do a kinesthetic thing where they can like work it out, you know, maybe do a punching bag. Or there's quiet time where they can draw on a Buddha board, which is using water on a board, and they can draw. There's a lot of different things. And they have little timers, and they'd be timed for five minutes. Five minutes, okay, sign the pass, you need to go back to class. So that helps alleviate the strain on our social worker as well as our North Range Behavioral Health therapist for those moments when they just need to, as she said, to refocus themselves and get themselves back in the moment. They need to take a step back, and they're actually realizing that in themselves, which is huge, okay? They're not used to that. They're not used to compliments, they're not used to, you know, just being able to take that moment and take a breather and calm yourself down. So it's basically to re-center and refocus.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, too.
Other comments or questions? I've rolled up a couple if you don't mind. Your behavior incidents going kind of, kind of down by grade. And I want to try to pursue whether that speaks to a culture being established by the time you're in ninth grade, or you kind of get it. Still not got it in seventh grade, but by eighth grade, it's measurably different. And am I right in making that assumption?
Yes, there's a lot of different factors that go into play. So a lot of the current eighth and ninth graders were a part of Jefferson Junior last school year. So they understand the norms and ways to access supports more so than entering seventh-grade students.
And so turnover, departures, arrivals, kind of contained? I don't know the...
Talking turnover and students?
Students, yes.
Most of them, they do stay. They stay.
Uh-huh.
But I could get back with you on this specific percentage.
No, I'm happy with the answer.
It is high too, from, from just observing the enrollments that we're measuring. If anything, our enrollments have continued to go up this year while keeping our same students.
Well, that, that speaks to...
We had a goal to be at a hundred students, and we're at a hundred and twelve.
So that culture's being recognized, appreciated, obviously, behavior and attendance. It's hard to get much learning done if you are involved in the opposite behavior. Just championing that reading skill, and they know they're that far behind in reading. They have that reading every day when they're unsuccessful. So championing that obviously is, is significant. This, someone knows this maybe, the Gear Up Grant? How long we've got that in the district, or is that specific to the school?
It's district. It's a district grant. And Megan, how long have we had Gear Up Grant? Gosh.
Oh, okay, all right. It always kind of, kind of, it's great that we can invest time like that with that money. It seemed like there was some other thing scribbled in red here on my sheet. Well, I guess I wanted to thank you, Ms. Byrne, because you could have stayed somewhere else across town and gone about your business.
I'm a fighter, you know.
Yeah, well, I guess we're seeing that in many ways. But I would like to thank you and certainly as, as Mr. Haley said, thanks to your staff for getting this work done. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Oh, oh, Ms. Solis.
So I just kind of want to reiterate what Roger was saying. Thank you for the work that you do. I mean, this is really, really tough work. And I know even as a casa, I see my kids, and a couple of them went to Jefferson. One just graduated, so I was so excited for her. But it really is, there's a lot of kids going through some really tough stuff, and some of us adults have no idea. And I am just amazed sometimes what we expect kids to survive and what we as adults don't show as an example very well in certain situations. So thank you for all the hard work, and please thank your staff for all that they do for our kiddos. And this kind of work is, you know, groundbreaking. This is stuff that we can do all across the district, hopefully, in different scenarios and different ways. And so thank you for doing that groundwork and really helping these kids. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Doctor.
Mr. DeWitt, if I may, before we wrap up.
Absolutely.
But thank you to you all. So I need to apologize. I misspoke earlier about the numbers of Betcher Scholars. I don't know what I was looking at. But I have since pulled up accurate data and would like to correct myself that we have actually had multiple Betchers, up to three Betchers in three years over the last eleven years. So I just wanted to correct that.
You might have been thinking of some other district.
Maybe I was. That's entirely possible. Somewhere else where I used to work, perhaps, yeah. So anyway, I want, you know, I don't want to discredit the hard work that's gone on across the district around getting students ready for being a Betcher Scholar. So thank you for letting me correct that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other corrections that we want to get into before we part? We have completed our agenda. Thanks for participating tonight. We'll see you in May. This meeting is adjourned.
District Six has the second...